Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to have you at our meeting, which is going to come soon. The City Commission to order. And at this time, Commissioner Trevino has invited Reverend Gene Palmas with the First Christian Church of Harlingen to lead us in our invocation, so we'd like to ask him to do so. He can come up and speak into the mic, so everybody can hear you maybe a little better.
I'm an elder with the First Christian Church, and it's an honor to be here. And go to our Heavenly Father. Heavenly Father, God, thank you so much. Thank you for this place. Thank you for Harlingen, Texas, Heavenly Father. Thank you for the wonderful people that live here that you love so much, God. Thank you for the neighborhoods. Father, I thank you as we celebrate our independence. Father, God, I thank you for all the men who stand on the front lines defending our freedom as a country, Father God. I thank you for the people right here in Harlingen, Texas, our police and firemen, so many of them here tonight, God, out there every day, putting their lives on the line, loving us, caring for us, Heavenly Father. Pray your protection upon them and your blessing upon their families for the love they show. God, I pray for this City Commission, Heavenly Father. I pray that you would give them true wisdom, Father. Your word promises that if any man lacks wisdom, just have a mass, and that you do give generously without finding faults. So I just pray wisdom. Father, I pray that the light of truth would shine into this place each and every time we meet, Heavenly Father, that the truth would come out, God. Whatever anybody says, that the truth would just be shown through, Heavenly Father. Father, most of all, I just pray especially for those men and women in this place who confess the name of Jesus as Lord and Savior, that we glorify you in this place, Father God, that we glorify you with our decisions tonight and every night and every second of our lives, Heavenly Father. Father, whatever the case, I do pray that all that occurs here tonight is pleasing, acceptable to you, Heavenly Father, and we just give you thanks again, thanks for who you are and who we are in you, Heavenly Father. We love you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend. Please drop in quick. I play the lead.
The allegiance to the flagline of the United States of America into the Republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to thank you for having me here tonight at our meeting. And the first, also like to welcome everybody tomorrow. A happy Fourth of July, as we look back upon founding of our country and the Declaration of Independence. It's a special day, and we're going to have some special activities with City Harlingen to sponsor tomorrow, which I think you'll be able to hear in just a minute. Item one is a public announcement of events, and we'll ask our marks director. I don't, it's not, that's not really your time anymore, is it? Something else. Paul Menzies to tell us about some of the events tomorrow.
The mayor introduced tomorrow's Independence Day Festival sponsored by the city. The J.C.'s will be putting on the festival, the city, the music, the White Wings, the game. Everything starts off at four o'clock tomorrow with the parade down Jackson Street. The festival and the music at Long C Hill Park starts at 5:30. The White Wings game at Harlingen Field at 6:30. That's a special game time because they want to get done at about 9:30 when we'll have the fireworks. Headliner is Jimmy Gonzalez, Ole Mas. They should be on stage about 8:45. That's it. We're expecting a big crowd. Even out to the park today, we're already getting set up. Everybody's excited.
Okay. Great story in the newspaper behind.
Yes, fireworks, 9:30, 9:45, not 10:30, as it's been published. 9:30, 9:45 after the game.
Very good. Thank you. Any other public announcement?
Mayor, I have one. Yeah, I just wanted to announce that this Saturday in District Two, on East Lee and between East Lee and East Adams, we're going to have another neighborhood cleanup event. And I just want to invite anybody that wants to come help participate in that. We're always successful. Stat does a great job. And it'll be between 8:00 a.m. until noon on Saturday. Again, that's on East Lee Street, between East Lee to East Adams Street, between First and Third Street. So I just invite everybody who wants to help participate.
Any other announcements of public events? Thank you very much. And item two, support recognitions. Recognizations. Commissioner Mr. President.
Ken, Ken Clark, can you bring the troops up here? And last meeting, we had a presentation about the 200 or so houses, properties that have been cleaned up and knocked down to make this town a better place. And I'd like for Ken Clark and all of his troops to just stand up here. And I just want to say a huge thank you. You folks are out there every day. You're out there in the sweat and the heat, and you're doing the things that need to be done to make this place a better town, and make it all a better town. And I just say, Solomon, thank you. Appreciate it all.
I just wanted to add that these are the same folks that primarily orchestrated our neighborhood cleanups, aside from the demolition work that's done in the city. So again, another round of applause for that.
I think this, you know, this is great. I think we ought, we do need to recognize you all. Probably there are other people in the room that you recognize. Tammy is one of them. Dan, Gabe, the rest of the staff, thank all of you for what you do to make our city a cleaner, safer place to live. Thank you. We have a couple of support number recognitions, and I'd like to hope that Morales and Ayiri Aviano could come up here and join me up here.
Please take a break now.
Both of you have a, come on, come on up here. We can all get together. You've agreed to serve on our Convention and Visitors Bureau, and we're so happy and delighted and we're thankful for you for agreeing to spend that time to serve on our Convention and Visitors Bureau. And I know that you all are going to do a great job with that, and we know a lot about the people that come into our community and your advice and help to that, to our CBB. It's going to be a very valued thing. So thank you for your agreement to serve and for all you do.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. I think that does support recognition. Go to item three, which is the approval of regular meeting minutes of June 6th. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Arrow, like a motion for a frozen meeting minutes.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, like aye. Motion carries. Next item is item four A through G, which are the, which is the consent agenda, Arrow. Motion to adopt consent agenda on final reading.
Senator.
Second.
All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item five, consider to take action to purchase one John Deere 8800 Terrain Cut Rough mower and two John Deere 2500 E Hybrid riding greens mowers from the golf course reserve funds of $114,212, two cents per place, two greens mowers that are beyond the pair of one rough mower, so it's the option two years ago.
Mayor, Commissioners, this equipment we desperately need. The two Jacobson units are no longer even usable. The two current greens mowers that we use seven days a week, we'll actually transfer those into T mowers, which will actually be used twice a week instead of seven days a week. The two Jacobson units that we're replacing are actually 14 years old. So it kind of shows you how long those other two pieces of equipment will last with the limited use. As far as the 8800 Terrain Cut Rough mower, we had some equipment that was put into auction several years ago that was never replaced, and this 8800 would replace that. The grand total of the three pieces of equipment are $114,212.52. Our current reserve fund balance is $620,769, which leaves us a balance of a little over Staff approves the purchase.
We have some questions.
Yes, sir.
You're purchasing this in the state but north of the valley? Is that correct? Are you purchasing it locally?
These will actually be buyboard purchases. They go through, I believe it's Austin Turf and Tractor.
And so we can purchase them in Harlingen or a valley dealer?
I think that's who the contract goes through. Okay.
Well, given that, you know, you can purchase things through the buyboard, you actually get a better price because, you know, they have to register with the state, it's a 20% markup automatically.
Correct.
Okay. Is there, is there a motion to authorize the purchase?
Senator, second.
Any discussion? All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item six, consider to take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading that a man's ordinance number 08-47 creates a family, friends, corporate membership category within the Tony Butler Municipal Golf Course fee schedule that increase the number of coupons available for purchases at golf, or to play golf.
Okay. We would like to add a 100 round, both nine and 18 holes to our portfolio for pre-purchase rounds of golf. We could use this program to offer rounds of golf at a discounted rate to area businesses and organizations. They can also be used by individuals for personal use. These businesses and organizations can use these memberships as wellness programs, incentive programs, and even for guests and family members if needed. The cost of the 100 rounds of nine holes would be $900, and overall savings from the regular green fee of not $300, and basically a $3 savings per round. The 100 rounds of 18 holes cost would be $1100. The overall savings will be $400 off of the regular green fee, and your savings per round will be $4 per round.
Do you anticipate anybody golfing up $1100 bucks at this time?
Yes, we do. There has been some interest in this area. We've been approached by a couple of local businesses and some winter Texans parks that would actually like to offer rounds of golf to their residents and things like that. So what they would do is actually purchase this, this membership where they could actually bring the, like, the card or whatever it is that we issued to them with a letter stating that they've got permission from the authorized, authorized organization, and they can proceed from there.
Well, most golf courses anyways, when it comes to winter Texans, they offer all kinds of coupons, and they find in...
The cool thing about this is we can use it as a wellness program for area businesses. They can use that as incentive programs to their employees, you know, their employees of the month. They can issue these out and say, hey, for this month, you get to golf at Tony Butler for free.
Oh, you're just taking basic programs, just expanding it out?
Exactly.
Bottom line, it's a great marketing tool.
Exactly.
A great marketing tool for, I think, something that, along those same lines, we want to acknowledge our city staff, Eddie and his crew out there, they've been doing some really great improvements at the golf course. And I think that just allows us as a community to really market what we have here in our city. I think it's a, it's a great move.
I would like to take a little bit of time to possibly acknowledge some of my board members for the Golf Advisory Board. We have Danny and Isa present, Art Gonzalez, and Sam Calazos. We had a couple other members that couldn't make it tonight, they had previous engagements, but...
Speaking of, then, my mind's speaking on this, the marketing winter Texans and such. Do any other community golf courses, Rio Grande Valley Golf Courses, have a program identical to this or similarly?
No, sir. We would be the first in this situation.
Okay, so then we should probably work with the chamber and the visitors board to promote this, to hook some winter Texans into coming here versus west or south.
That's actually what I want to focus on. I want to go to the chambers of not only Harlingen but LaFaria, San Benito, even maybe as far as West Laclelle, and provide this information to those chambers so they can submit it to their, their local businesses.
Do we expect that, is there a fiscal impact, like, there's going to be some fiscal impact?
I don't believe so, because they're prepaid rounds of golf, so once they use them, they renew them.
Well, I think the mayor's concerned about if you're packaging these at a discount, are we going to see some existing customers convert over to these, to these discount packages, and your revenue is less?
When you're talking, most of our people that purchase our coupon books are winter Texans, and they're set on a fixed income. So when you're talking about bumping the price up, you know, several hundred dollars on something, I don't think that they're going to, they're going to bite too hard on that.
Well, if you're offering a discount, when you, when you equate the number of rounds that you're offering...
The current coupon books are on a discounted rate also, and we didn't, we didn't go too far away from that. It is a little more of a savings than our, than our actual coupons that are in place now, but on a, like, 50 cents a round difference.
I certainly like the idea of the promotional aspect of it, the marketing aspect. I'm just curious whether you think that was going to increase your revenues, decrease your overall revenues?
I believe it would definitely increase our revenues.
Okay.
Because we're talking in a, an area that we haven't talked about before.
And if you see that you're seeing a lot of people convert over, you could set a cap to the number of these packages that you sell.
Correct.
Good.
So not only that, when you're marketing something like this, you're going through volume anyways.
Okay. We have a question in the audience.
Just quickly, can gentleman give us a clue as to the capacity currently, and at what point are we going to reach a saturation level that is going to drive additional costs to the golf? What is the current capacity? How many people are golfing now? And what is your capacity limit?
Currently, we're doing over 60,000 rounds a year. You know, during our, our peak season, we're doing over 400 rounds a day. So currently, we're actually pretty much up to capacity now. We take tee times two days in advance. You know, we take tee times right now during the wintertime all the way to 3:00, and those tee sheets will be full. This just gives another opportunity for people to actually participate.
Eddie, would you think, in your estimation, do you think your peak season is certainly when winter Texans are here?
Correct.
But during, and that's usually a lot of visitors. The great majority of them are outside of the area to come to visit for the winter. But your slow season is typically during, like, right now during the summer. And I think, would it be, do you think it would be a great marketing tool, in other words, when we, if we were to incorporate this, where now that type of a corporate membership would affect the localized population, where if you maybe increase some of the traffic there on the course during that off season?
By focusing on local businesses, that's what we're trying to do. It's exactly what we're trying to do, to pick up our, our rate of play here in the summertime.
Okay. I think we'd just like to, you know, to follow it, watch it, see if it answers the desire in effect, and kind of, you know, and don't hesitate to come back and say, maybe we ought to change this from back and do something.
Okay.
One more question in the audience. I'm going to read the, I read the ordinance. Should have gotten Mr. Moore to state his name. You need to state your name.
Yeah, Jerry Moore and...
How to raise your...
Address.
I think it's an important question, Mayor Ronald Son. But I just talked to one of your city attorneys in, within the last hour, and I have to know that Eddie Medley knows well that within this very town, without detracting from Mr. Mesmar's assertion about useful marketing, within this city limits of Harlingen, there is another golf course that does coupons, and there are others in the valley, and that's the way the question was posed. But whether it's unique or not, that doesn't detract in any way from what Mr. Mesmar has indicated.
Okay. Could we ask the, ask the city attorney to read the caption now, please?
An ordinance of the City of Harlingen, Texas, amending ordinance number 08-47 of the Harlingen City Code as amended to create a family, friends, and corporate membership account category within the Tony Butler Municipal Golf Course fee schedule and increase the number of coupons available for purchase at the Tony Butler Municipal Golf Course to play golf, providing publication, providing a savings clause, providing a certifiability clause, and updating other matters related to the prevailing.
Senator.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like aye. Motion carries. Item seven, consider to take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading that allows current and top secret employees and senior retirees of minimum 20 years of service to the City of Harlingen to play golf at the Tony Butler Municipal Course and not pay green fee.
Please let the record reflect that Commissioner Castillo will be abstaining from Agenda Item Number One and has left the number.
Okay. This, this program would allow full-time employees and retirees with 20 or more years of service to the city of Harlingen to play at Tony Butler Golf Course without paying a green fee as part of a wellness program. There are currently over 550 full-time employees of the city of Harlingen that could benefit from this program. They would, however, be responsible for any other fees associated with their rounds of golf. That would be food and beverage sales, cart sales, if they just, if they choose to ride, and range balls, if they choose to, to practice beforehand. There is currently a league that plays on Thursday evenings that averages about 10 city employees. They play for about 19 weeks. They currently pay $14 for their round of golf for nine holes. That would be a, a loss of $2,600. Now, we would recoup $1,140 back just from the cart fees. With this program, I truly believe that there will be a lot more city employees that come out and utilize this program. It'll help us to promote other employees that are playing at other golf courses in the city of Harlingen. In the long term, I think we would recoup that, the other money, and then make some more on top of it with food and beverage sales, cart sales, and range sales.
You said, you have a guess, there's 550 employees. How many more rounds of golf does this would cause, and what's the financial impact that sounds like a financial loss?
In the last two weeks, we have had a substantial amount of police, fire, and several other areas, you know, employees in the city that have heard about this, and they've been coming out to the golf course saying they can't wait till this starts. Most of these employees I've never seen before. So I really do think that it will promote people who haven't been playing at the golf course to come out to our facility.
Do you have a number of employees that are 20 years right now?
We do not. It's very difficult to, to try to decide who, who exactly would be...
Human resources, I mean, just a bottom line number, what, human resources, 20 years and up? Can't be that many.
It's, yeah, it's not very many. That actually play golf.
Effort, effort is stepping out.
Yep.
We, we have no idea. We would have to probably ask TMRS to provide us a list, but it, there's a...
I mean, human resource doesn't have a employee list of 20 years?
No, because some, some employees may have been retired, say, from, you know, 20 some years ago.
This is something that the Golf Course Advisory Board has...
This is something that, that the Golf Course Advisory Board did approve.
Would you consider, like, half off versus free? Because I, I don't know what the financial impact of this would be on the city, because with this, you know, everything has a cost.
Our green fee's $15.
Okay.
For 18 holes, $12.
This is, this would be then an employee benefit.
You're, you're right. It would be a wellness program, it would be a benefit that we could, we could use...
And so the question is, is what's the financial cost? What are the rewards? And one has to weigh that. Can we have more information from you?
Well, I, we don't currently have very many city employees playing at the facility. You know, that's what I was trying to bring up about the city league.
Come on, I think the concern is that we may get a flood of them, and it may...
Well, Commissioner...
Let me back up real quick. There was a question that was presented earlier, and it had to do with saturation and costing more to do business. And I don't believe that more, it costs you too much to turn that business, but I think it does when you, when you create, like, your tee times increase because of your, the number of people that you, that you got to. You do have saturation during some times of the year, and I think that that, that in itself is not a good thing for a golf course, because somebody is going to say, well, it's always too busy there, let's go somewhere else.
Well, we currently take tee times two days in advance, and, you know, that kind of keeps some of that down to a minimum.
Yeah. Now, I think what you're proposing to us is that you've got, you're fixing, you're, you're going to introduce the, you're asking us to consider a free benefit for 500-some employees and then family and friends package. And we already know that, that Tony Butler is pretty popular, and that I've been out there, seems like you're someone who out there did some pack, and like you said, I mean, there's a waiting list on a lot of occasions to even play.
During a three-month period of time, yes.
Yeah.
Now, when we're, this time of year, we need all the play we can get. That's for any golf course in the valley.
Can you make it like, they bring a paying customer, and then you play free?
Well, and that's, that is, that's what's going to happen.
Right.
I mean, you know, it's, by allowing these people to come in and, and play for free, they're going to bring their friends. Perfect example is Sam, Sam here. He plays with a group on every Tuesday, and, and they have four guys that play, and they travel all the way, all around the valley to go play. Now, with this benefit, there would be people in his group that would be allowed to play here for free. That would be incentive for that group to show up every single Tuesday at our facility instead of going to somewhere else. And there's three or four paying customers in that group.
Yeah, but I think something that you have to look at is, I think, our golf course has 27 homes. Our new golf course in the valley has 27 homes.
My name is Sam Calazos. I'm the president of the Tony Butler Golf Course Advisory Board. And having looked at this for a while, I personally play golf, and I notice that two rounds of golf a week keeps the doctor away. So when you include this into the wellness program, look at the, what the city is going to save as far as the insurance that you pay a year. There's a lot of people that will start playing golf, walk in nine holes, and they're going to stay away from the doctor, therefore making less claims of the city insurance. That's number one. This is a win-win thing. Number two is from the financial standpoint. No golfer likes to play by themselves. If I'm going to go play golf, I'm going to put a foursome together, and that foursome is the other three people, or four, are going to pay full price. Plus, food and beverages, we're going to leave from 100 to 150 or more dollars at the golf course on that foursome or fivesome. Now, four people do that a day, you do the math, times seven days a week, times a month, times a year, you're talking about thousands of dollars in revenue into Tony Butler Golf Course. Now, I heard a while ago about this 500 employees. Look at the percentage of the 500 employees that are going to go out there and play. What's the percentage? Maybe 5%? Maybe 10%? You're looking at maybe 10 people, maybe 20 out of the 500 that are going to enjoy this, maybe 30? I don't know exactly what the numbers are. So that's a, that's a, that's an out right there. Now, I hear this about that the golf course is going to lose $2100 or $14 per player. Okay. You lose $14 rent fee, but you pick up whatever, $13, $14 from the card. So you didn't lose anything. That cart's in the shed right now because it's not being used. Put it to use. Okay. So from, from the revenue standpoint... Okay, so, from, from the revenue standpoint, this is a win-win thing. I mean, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure it out. But there's gonna be a lot of money coming into Tony Butler Golf Course with this, if this proposal is accepted.
Would you all, have you considered, would you all be comfortable, let's say, if this was adopted, let's say, from May first through October thirtieth? When winter, when it's not winter Texans season because it.
Well, from what I understand.
The Texans fill up the courses and the.
To get on the golf course, you need a tee time, whether winter Texans are here or not. Therefore, during the winter, the city employee is gonna have a very difficult time getting there because it's taken, that tee time's taken by, by a winter Texan. So, that, that doesn't come into play because of the, of the system, the way the system is run. Thank you.
During the winter time, we have league play and majority of the courses wrapped up during league play from nine AM to twelve o'clock on the eighteen hole side, a little bit earlier than that on the nine hole side. So, Sam is correct, during the winter time, a lot of our, our tee times are blocked off for our winter Texan parks. So, it would be a lot, it would be difficult for, to have a mass, you know, flooding of tee times during that, during that time.
Okay, I'm sorry, Commissioner, did I interrupt you or did I want to give you your time back?
Oh, my.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I just, I mean, I, I support it. The reason why I support it is because I, I know in the winter, winter Texan time, when they're down, it's like you had to call two years ago to get a tee time. I know that, and most of the tee times are not available until Tuesday o'clock in the afternoon.
Right.
I don't think this is gonna be a big burden on the city at all. And I, I think exactly what they're saying is that they're gonna bring friends with them. So, you might have a couple of city employees playing and you'll have four or five guys that are gonna play, that they're gonna pay full price. And if they want a cart, they have to pay ten bucks for the cart and that's the normal price anyways, am I right?
Correct.
So, I mean, you're not really losing. I don't think, I think a winner is a game.
Okay, all right. Two, same two people.
May I approach your honor?
Yes.
Well, it is your honor, I'm sorry.
State your name again.
Sure, Ron Lozano, and as you just heard cogently, Eddie and Sam were in direct conflict. One of them sternly says, we need a tee time. He clarifies accurately, you see, you are accurate a lot of times. There are blocks reserved, as he indicated, from about seven AM for some of the winter Texan parks, pretty much as the commissioners have indicated till about two PM. That's a large segment of the day when you realize that we're back to central standard time and it gets dark about five o'clock. So, that leaves a very narrow window. And then the students that we defer to, and we should, as we've done historically for forty years and won a lot of district championships, they come from school at two o'clock, will arrive at the golf course by about two-thirty at the latest. Some of them even earlier, like the junior highs that are almost on top of the golf course from different cities also now. So, it's grown from the time when we started that tradition in the late sixties. But the real issue here that you're not, and there's a lot of political reasons, and I have failed, I have relented, but I always knew it was gonna be a slippery slope and finally today has arrived. Not only are the winter Texans favored, but the ones that got the windfall were like when, or right after my dad was not that active in Pan Am, of which Sam has been president also. Pan Am has allocated no tee time. They can show up at ten o'clock on Sundays, at noon on Saturdays, where, whether there's a bunch of them or just a few of them, they have a slot available. So, they don't need no tee times. That's why I differ with my friend, Mr. Cabasos. Eddie's absolutely right, a large segment of the population does not need a tee time. The slippery slope you're heading now with the city employees is, I've always felt that we were discriminating against the rest of the people that are not part of a private group. The country club left because they knew they were gonna lose that after the civil rights stuff. And now they're presently at Palm Valley. But Pan Am took over where the country clubbers fill, and fill the void, which is they and a group at eight o'clock on Saturday, and they also show up on Sundays. These are private individuals that, that form a group and are allocated special privileges at a public golf course. I think you're gonna invite a litigation if you come to the point where you keep favoring certain groups and the rest of the population that may not be favored for any number of reasons, including political strength in our democracy, are now limited to two or three hours in the winter, as Mr. Mesmar has accurately depicted. So, I think you ought to listen and, and look at this issue a little bit closer. On the, on the surface, it looks nice, but if you dig deep and look at the actual reality, you're gonna find out there's problems with this, with this particular discrimination. Thank you.
Evening. Jerry Morrison, Long Island County. Yeah, just not to overcomplicate this, I've been in the airline industry now for thirty years and it's not complicated. They try to provide employees, people that support your aircraft on a standby basis. And if you're gonna get into a situation where you've got full paying players standing in line, waiting for people that are playing for free, yeah, they've earned it, it's not gonna go over well and you're gonna lose. So, my suggestion is, is create the standby, if there's a standby slot available, plug them in. This, this, this won't be hard, but I think it needs more work. Thank you.
Mayor, I just wanna, I just wanna bring up the comment, I've listened to some comments from Mr. Cabasos. I think that one of the concerns that we had was the number of total employees. Then it was brought up that, oh, you're only gonna see about ten or twenty, maybe twenty-five that are gonna show up and actually take advantage of this benefit. And that, that kind of bothers me because that tells me that those folks are already going and they're not gonna bring anybody new that's not already going with them. And we're not gonna, the only thing that this appears to me is to be a boondoggle for some select group that's just gonna, that's just gonna get in for free at taxpayers' expense. And, and that kind of bothers me. If I thought for sure, and I'm just going based on the comments that I heard from our, our board member, that he doesn't anticipate any, anybody other than the people that are already showing up, showing up.
I don't necessarily agree with him.
And I, I kind of believe that. I kind of think that that's what we're gonna see. We're just gonna see a group of people that are already, that are already going out there under the guise of a so-called wellness program.
About three weeks ago, we had a tournament for fire, for fire personnel. They brought out about twenty-five guys. Just recently, we started seeing those guys on a regular, a regular basis when they're off. You know, they're, they're excited about, about the opportunity to try to do something like that.
And, and the other thing that I, that I kind of agree with Mr. Mesmar is that maybe, maybe we wanna offer city employees a discount. But maybe not a hundred percent discount. Maybe there should be some, just like every other employer has some kind of a percentage off of the regular fee, an employee discount, but to completely waive some of those fees seems kind of extraordinary to me.
I, I think, you know, this is hard, I think this is hard for us because we certainly, you know, want to offer, you know, what we, everything we can for our employees. We do the best we can for our employees. But I, I, I am also concerned about, you know, that this, this sort of smacks as favoritism toward employee or, or, you know, over our residents or citizens who don't get any special discount or any, or any special treatment, who also need the benefits of being outside and exercising just as much as anyone else does. And so I've got some concern about that. Do you know whether or not, and I also, I also would like to know what the fiscal impact is gonna be. I don't think, I don't really see any, you know, estimates here on that. There's nothing accompanying this proposal that includes a fiscal impact. Do you, do you know what, how many other municipal golf courses have some kind of program like this?
There's, there's one in McAllen that does offer all city employees free green fee.
How about to suggest that we table this in case of more information on how other municipal golf courses treat this? What the anticipated fiscal impact might be, what, how many people we think are gonna use it, that kind of thing? And maybe look at it again. That would be my suggestion for tonight. I appreciate that the board has spent a considerable amount of time looking at it. I think that there's other issues that have been raised here tonight that are very, very concerning.
If we can get the numbers from McAllen, that would probably give you a good idea of full, of all the employees as opposed to what we're looking at with twenty employees. So, you can figure that out pretty quick and give us a, you know, a presentation again and give us those numbers and then we can have better information besides this.
Cause we're talking about current employees, retirees, and we don't, and we don't even know how many retirees would even all part of this. We just know the five hundred potential employees. We don't know if there's a hundred, a hundred and fifty retirees that are closing around out there. Could be a burden too.
All right. I, I would, I would have a motion to table this, or a motion to table.
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to table this discussion at this time until we can get better numbers. Tell second.
All those in favor say aye. I oppose. All right, thank you very much.
And thank you for bringing all this up. Appreciate it.
Mayor, I think, board member Dan Ariza would like to.
I'm sorry, on that issue, we'd like to invite you all at the next board meeting concerning the topic. I think we're right on plan and just to finalize, so that way it can be more refined. I think the topic's very, very good.
Don't forget, we, we did approve the package, the discount, the coupons. It's just the, the other item that we'd like to detail about.
Let the record reflect that Commissioner Castillo has returned.
Item A, discuss and, thank you very much, Mr. Ariza. Item A, just discuss and take action to approve the agreement with the company, for a hundred and eighty-dollar save energy fee.
Good to be mayor, city commission and city staff, citizens of Harlingen. Thank you for your opportunity to speak with you here tonight. My name is Ramiro LeMann. I'm the manager of business development with the Harlingen Economic Development Corporation. And since March of this year, we've been working with a company called Dollar Save Energy. They're a retail electric service provider that will be based here in Harlingen. Staff worked with them and the board diligently to, to come up with an agreement that's mutually beneficial to both them and the city of Harlingen. And on May sixteenth, the EDC board approved an agreement with Dollar Save that will create twenty-six new additional jobs in Harlingen. And staff recommends approval of the project, of the agreement. How many questions do we have?
Three questions. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. All right, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Item nine, consider to take action to authorize staff to submit proposals to the Blue Group Foundation Mayor's Challenge and to submit the RSVP license and two thousand. I, I've shared the information in your packet with you about a package that I received last week. It's called Mayor's, it's the Blue Group for philanthropies Mayor's Challenge inviting cities to submit projects that they think can make, can solve a serious problem for city life that could be replicated in other areas and other cities. Some of the, some of the things they're looking for are partnerships with other entities and something that solves a problem that other cities are, are facing. And I heard to me that perhaps, you know, what we have done with the, what the city has done with the gang eradication passports and the community outreach center combined might be a good program to work out and to submit. There is a cash prize to continue the, the project, or to do something well with the project. One, one city earns a five billion dollar grant prize and four cities earn a billion dollar grant, grant prize. I talked with the chief a little bit about, they've already sort of worked up a similar application for another deal, another program that they're, they're working on. This, that doesn't have to be the project we submit. I'd like to, I'd like to get the commission's authorization to put the staff on this, send, send the card back and start working, start working that program, bring it back, bring, bring that back. And if there are any other ideas, we can flip those, but commissions aside, can decide what to submit. But I think, you know, there's certainly some innovative things that have been done, that have been recognized in that project and maybe make that something we should submit.
So. I think that'd be a good idea, Mayor, using that project maybe and also our project of cleaning up the city's dilapidated structures and hopefully building new homes on these lots and cooperation.
County, your home's coming out there.
County, the school district and, and the city. I think that'd be a good cooperation agreement.
I think we need to, you know, look, have, have, you know, have the various stakeholders, you know, look at this. We need to bring Tommy Ramirez into this process and have, have them, they look at it. I, I think that we ought to, in addition to our own staff, you know, I think in order to package this just right, we ought to get our staff right, our contract staff right, or I mean, the team involved, for example. Have somebody like that work this thing out so that it's presented the best possible way.
I totally agree. I'm looking for approval.
All right, is there a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, like, sign, I'm officially handing the RSVP card to the significant.
You win.
And so if he doesn't, if he, if it doesn't get submitted on time, it's his fault.
Lasted a day.
You all, you all heard it here. Okay, item ten is discussed and considered authorized. The city staff developed policies regarding veterans memorial, confirming that the city will not place any plans on the veterans memorial except for those related to the veterans. Fred Rendon, oh.
Frank.
Mr. Payton, Frank, do we want to speak to this or do you want to? This is an issue that I, to, to call in, brought to my attention and.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, on behalf of the Harlingen Veterans Memorial Committee, would like to thank the city staff, especially Sir and I and his fine people who made this thing finally develop into a project, invite you all to come by and see the progress. It's very impressive. And we'd like to thank the city for considering this motion to ensure that we do not have brass plaques or memorials placed on the, on the site that is intended to, to honor and, and support the veterans and their families only and not to honor the commissioners or the mayors and so forth. You don't have to look very far to find some cities having difficulty with that even at this time. This memorial, veterans memorial is indeed for the veterans and I appreciate everybody's commitment to continue that without a lynch.
Yeah, I think, I think the committee raised this with us during the process and kind of informally. And as far as I know, everybody, nobody objected to that policy.
Everyone we spoke to.
But the committee thought perhaps a good idea to memorialize it with some action by this.
We, we.
Frank, I'm, I'm a little disappointed in you actually because you did mention that you could put your name on a paper if you wanted your name out there.
If you're a veteran.
No, anybody.
You're right.
No.
Well, in memory, for, for a veteran.
Anticipating that some abuse or misuse or misunderstanding about the nature of. about the nature of the pavers had been considered from the earliest time in the committee. And we took the, made our policy in our minutes to control what gets engraved on pavers. Made it our prerogative without question. And no recourse, if we can do that in the city of Orange. The memorial, the pavers are to honor the veterans and other like responders who risked their lives for us. And primarily called veterans. Our definition being those who have risked their lives and loved us so much that they were willing to do so and a space of those families that suffered the cost. It is for the veterans, and the city of Orange, thankfully, is considering to ensure that it stays for the veterans.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's good to acknowledge that about every individual in this room is a family member, a parent, or a sibling that has served. Now, my brother has served, my father's served, I've had ancestors that served throughout our generations. And I think that's likewise with anybody in this room. So I think we all have a close family consideration for veterans, and we all appreciate the service that all the individuals, you know, that serve in our armed forces know that they get.
Yeah, I don't think it's important at all for us to have a plaque with our names and stuff out there.
Yeah.
This is not a veterans.
Not an issue for me. You know, that's the important, that's the important aspect of doing the memorial.
Because we've spoken to the mayor, and we thank all the commissioners. One or two of us have, we anticipate an overwhelming approval of this motion, and we thank you for it. And it's for the veterans. That's all.
Mayor, may I say one quick thing, please? I applaud, and my name is Ron LaSano, Mr. Hale, because I felt that he was gonna not broach it. And at the end, Commissioner Lefwitch was talking about veterans. But Mr. Hale said first responders. And with one exception, at a formal hearing, since you said informal, I'll admit another thing you said. Art Cohen indicated that he wants EMS personnel, firemen, policemen to have a plaque. There was gonna be six for the five conflicts that we've had in this century or in the last hundred years. And he wanted a special plaque for the first responders. Everything else, everything else, and the impression on all of your minds, including Roberts up until this afternoon, is that this is for the veterans. Not so. Not so. Art Cohen and my good friend, Frank Rendon, and others, they know full well that they intend to put a plaque for first responders. I think it's imperative that you, as you take action, take action to defend the veterans. And if there's a good definition of veterans, those are the people that have served in those five services areas. And I think that's what all of us have in mind when we talk about veterans. And we are on the cusp of Independence Day. Thank you.
Well, I think basically what the intent of this policy is, we're not gonna put up a plaque to honor ourselves after the board or the commission or the mayor or the city staff. We're just gonna honor the people that the board intended to. So do I, your motion to that affect?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Sir.
You get it, is that all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. All right, item 11, the board appointments.
Yeah, I would like to reappoint Loquita, you know, Reese, and reappoint William Trey Pecop.
Okay, to which?
Uh, William, reappoint.
Reappoint what?
Yes, reappoint. Tammy, what's the official title for Loquita?
Community Development.
Community Development, Development Board. And Trey Pecop to planning and assembly.
I have a senior citizens advisory, Norma Steele. Put her back on there. She's back at burning pot, so she's eligible. Norma Steele.
Okay, sounds good. Is there a motion to approve the board appointments? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm gonna move up the citizens communication. I think we just have one. Mrs. Solis. Kinda Solis on beautification. So this is I am.
Kinda Solis, 613 Siam Street. On here today, after eight years of sitting around here, I guess you have not, I suppose not many times, have heard me say something. But I know at the beginning of my first year or two years, all I did was complain about the many issues that were not taken care of or were not being handled, which I thought at that time, just coming back from Chicago at this city where I grew up, that were not done correctly. But anyway, today I'm here to say, Commissioners, I'm your mayor, and of course, my commissioner, which is the fourth district, I wanna say thank you for all that you have done, all the many things that were needed there for many years, especially our mayor. Eight years ago, when I started here, you were saying, Commissioner, no. You had started and all, you had started cleaning up and doing a lot of things in this area. Well, now, you're gonna be able to see what has been accomplished in these many years that I had gone all over. I volunteered many hours and many boards in here and in the city. I wanna tell you, Mayor, that you go by Taylor and P Street in the last two weeks after you gave us that kind of, I wanna say thank you for giving me the honor to help out in this commission to beautify our city with Ruby and our commissioner in that area. I want you to go back and see what beautiful job they did on those two canals, and we hope to do the same thing in many others. I just wanna say thank you to our city manager, our attorney too, because you have done a lot of, taken a lot of homes down from the area where I live that were actually causing a lot of problems. I wanna say from the bottom of my heart, thank you. Thank you, thank you, all of you.
All right, thank you. And you, we have, you do so much volunteer work in this community. We did.
One name I forgot to, Dan Serna, in the last two weeks. I guess without him, in the past six years, we work in the Harlingen proud. But now, in these last two weeks, now that he's, I don't know, it's the new position, but even before, he did a lot of cleaning up, and he has done a lot of things possible. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I have, where are we?
Mayor?
Executive Executive Session.
Well, I wanted to just say very briefly. Well, I tried to point out to Ms. Lison, I came by earlier today, but she was tied up with a city attorney during the 4:00 hour. Just, if you give me about thirty seconds. I think I've already lost my thunder in suggesting what we all know if we get to celebrate Independence. I ratify what Ms. Solis just said about the mayor's accomplishments of a physical nature. But the reason she's over here, even with an aging husband, behind, late into the game, before executive session is because the mayor is short-circuiting the citizens' communication at the beginning. Other communities do it at the fore, and other entities within ours do it at the fore. I hope the mayor reflects on Independence Day and what it really means to be an American. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other communities in the valley have this at the end. Item 12, close executive session to discuss the following items. A percent to chapter 551, subchapter D, PTC, a group of citizens on 5, 1, 2, 7, 1, and constellations, city attorney, secret, advice, attorney, whatever, bring the camera gatherers, state of Texas, in front. Name three business zones, 1, 2, and 3, and 5, 1, 2, 3, 8, 7. Very important. This is prospect. Which the city commissioners developing economic development can use to discuss the project. Prospect notes, prospect comfortable. Yeah. Back to 1, 2, 3, 4, personal matters, discussing the administration. City, Earl. Item 12.
This is the only time that this law shouldn't start in the beginning.
Yeah, big advice regarding this, baseball card, these places. I don't feel the amount of death of survivors. You're on the executive session.
I'll make a motion, we're going to executive session, we stand here.
Please let the record reflect that Commissioner Kiskiel will be abstaining from the items number 12A and 13.
Is there a second? Need a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I suppose, like, sign. Motion carries. All right, you, uh, you all should discuss those. There will be, there will be no action on item 13. Item 14, consider to take action for the position of full-time presiding municipal court judge. Re-recommendation.
Is there a reappoint now, Judge Rockland?
Kind of the plan.
At the salary of eighty, though.
Is there a motion to some of?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, all right. Thank you, Judge Gata. We appreciate your service and look forward to another term of service. Great.
Still alive. Thank you very much.
All right. Happy Fourth of July, everyone.